Welcome to the Bartlett Planning Commission meeting for July the 7th, Monday. We're going to have our own Jack Young say a prayer with your pleas of allegiance and then we'll get the meeting started. Thank you.
You pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. Thank you for this city that we live in, Lord, that we have the opportunity to share our opinions and make people understand and know where we are and what we're coming from. Lord, I want to lift up those in Texas that have lost so much this past few days. God, I just pray for those families that have lost loved ones. Father, I thank you for the many blessings you give us, and as always, I pray that you would protect those who place themselves in harm's way for our benefit, and I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, unuttered, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hope everyone's had a chance to review the minutes. We have an entertaining motion to approve those.
Move we approve?
Second.
I got a first and a second. If you would just call the roll, please.
I'm sorry, who made the initial motion?
Jack and I think it was Ken.
David Hunt.
David? Okay.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes. Thank you. So starts the next business of the day. We have a public hearing for a plan development at Bartlett Boulevard and Yale Road. Kim, if you'd come forward and introduce that to us, please.
Mr. David Bray with the Bray Farm on behalf of the property owner and developer is requesting planning commission approval of a favorable recommendation for a plan development to be passed along to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. The property is located at the southeast corner of Yale Road and Bartlett Boulevard, and it is within the RS-10, that is Residential Single Family Zoning District. This property came before you in November 2024 as an eight lot plan development, but the applicant pulled it before it went to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and now you're coming with a slightly different request for reduced lots. As I said before, the prior request was for eight lots, and this particular one is for five lots on the same property, which is 3.66 acres in size. The lot sizes will range from 13,816 square feet to 58,800 square feet. The housing density will be 1.36 acres, I'm thinking units per acre, and the minimum lot sizes and also, I'm sorry, the minimum setback sizes are actually shown in your report. This proposed plan development will feature a 49,161 square foot common open space area, guest parking spaces, and a cluster mailbox area. Access to the subdivision will be from Yale Road and a right-in, right-out-only on Bartlett Boulevard. Staff has reviewed this application, and we recommend for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Do we have any questions from the commission for Director Taylor? This is for the commission at this point, sir. This is from the commission. Thank you. We'll get the public hearing in a moment. Any questions from the commission?
Why the reduction?
I'm sorry?
Why the reduction?
A different owner. A whole new, different owner with a different plan.
Any other questions from the commission?
Another question. Why the four small lots and one huge one?
Excuse me?
Why are there four small lots and one huge lot?
The one huge lot, I believe, is for the owner, and the other lots are for other buyers.
Anything else for Director Taylor? Seeing none, thank you, Director Taylor. Moving on to the public. Sam?
I was just going to say, we have not received any correspondence concerning this item.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that, we'll just move on to the public hearing. I want to remind everybody that we'll have 20 minutes for each side, three minutes per person. Sorry.
Do you want to hear from the applicant?
Yeah, we can. Sure. Just to round the little set first on the public hearing. It will be 20 minutes each side, three minutes per person, and if the applicant would like to come forward and speak on his, on the applicant's application's behalf, that'd be great.
David Bray with the Bray Farm, 2950 Stage Plaza North. We're in agreement with all the conditions. I'll reserve my time and answer any questions that come up during the public hearing.
If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
David Bray with the Bray Farm, 2950 Stage Plaza North.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so start the public hearing. We're going to start with the for. Anybody for the application? Anybody for? Seeing none, we'll go to the against. Any against? Any against the application? Any against? Seeing none? Any discussion among the commission? Sir, you keep raising your hand. I don't want to ignore you. We had a for and against public hearing. Is there something you wanted to say about this?
I'm saying this is that I am in the proper, you're joining this speaker. I'd like to ask you a couple of questions.
Okay, come forward. Sir, I have a misunderstanding. There's a for and against part of that public hearing. That's just the way it's set up. So sorry for the confusion on that. There's just a for and against part of that. There's no public comments, but you're welcome to ask anything that you like.
Yes, sir. My name is Zane Desk, and I live at 3332 Bartlett Boulevard, and we own the property that's next door to where this proposed subdivision is going to go up.
Okay.
So the first question I have to ask is, as this subdivision is being developed, is there any plans on a road or anything that allow the back access to my property? Because the way it's set up right now, it's got my property to be landlocked, and I will have no public access to this land, which makes it extremely difficult for me to market that property at a later time.
Okay. Do we have anybody here who could answer that for the citizen?
Could you pull up the plant?
Yeah.
Showing his property.
Here, we'll go to this one.
Yeah. I mean, it's not touching your property. It's the lot that's already there, and you still have access to Bartlett Boulevard as you do currently.
That's not the issue. The issue is that if I want to split this property, I was told by the planning commission that I had to subdivide. In order to subdivide, I had to be able to provide sewer, gas, and access. If this property over here is developed the way that you planned to develop it, I have no choice. My only access is on Bartlett Boulevard this way, which means I either sell the whole place at one shot, or I don't sell it. And nobody has consulted me, nobody has talked to me, nobody has asked me. I have not seen the first plan of any of this. This is the first I've heard of this, is what I'm seeing right here tonight.
So if you were to subdivide this, it would be similar to what the applicant's doing to this site. You would build a road coming off of Bartlett Boulevard that would come back, and then you would have a turnaround, and then that way, your additional lots would have the required lot frontage for RS-10 back here.
Okay. And that cost would be about what, $90,000?
You would have to consult an engineer and a contractor for that.
I would say, this plot has already been developed, is already set up and approved for seven. I mean, it was set up for eight lots some time ago. This has been quite some time ago. This is actually reducing the number of houses in here in density to five, which most people think that's a good thing. Instead of having five, eight, they have five.
I appreciate that. Again, it goes back to my original statement. This is a first matter. I have not been notified. I have not been called.
There's been-
They haven't given me the courtesy of a phone call.
Yeah, we're required to have public notices, and those have been made, and they were done a long time ago when that first came out.
No, no, no. We've sent the same mailings out three times.
Well, it sounds like y'all already made your decision, because there's a moot point.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, don't you have a private entrance in that, on that property closer to the subdivision areas here on this side?
There's a private entrance to the original James home.
Yes, sir.
Of one of the G. James who was passed on.
Yes, sir.
And that road leads back to a rental house.
Yes, sir.
And that property.
Then these two houses right here, they have their own access. Is that not correct?
I have my own access.
Uh-huh.
That's correct.
Okay.
But the backside of the property-
Yes, sir.
Always in the very back, which is about two and a half acres, is undeveloped. And the point of it is, is that in order for me to be able to sell this property at a later date, then I choose to do so. And I'd love to be able to tack on to this and let the developer in the building, this development, come on back in there and put in more lots, and I can go ahead and get that property sold. But the way it's set up right now, I look into it, and for me to be able to go back to satisfy the code, I would have to put in underground water, I would have to put in gas, I would have to put in electrical, and that would cost me anywhere from $150 to $200,000. I can't afford that. So I stopped that.
But wouldn't that be any development that needs to be put in, sir?
If he's already developing these lots-
Yes, sir.
He's already had approval from the commission, then for him to extend on back to take those, that property over as well would be just the extension of what he's putting in already. Would it be in the digital cost to him? Absolutely. But would he make that cost back up on selling those lots and homes? No question about it. I'm just offering him a higher, more land to be developed for a larger tax base to the City of Bartlett. But again, don't make your decision. Nothing like to do.
Sir, did you not get any information on that at all?
No. No, I have not. Now, you might say the public building didn't say that, but not one person has contacted me in any way, shape, or form.
You didn't get anything in the mail? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir. This is the first notice I've got.
Nobody calls people individually, none through the paper?
The original owners of the property, as I understand it, was a gentleman who owned the planning company. I attempted to contact him and his family to see if we could go together and market this property as one unit to a developer. I had a developer come out there. They said it was too small for a development unless we tore down everything that was out there. So that didn't go. We put the property on the market.
And we've got an offer on the property.
Had an appraisal done on the property. I've had a survey done on the property to look into how it would be to subdivide. I couldn't afford to do that. So my purpose in coming here tonight, one, getting more information, and I'm not trying to be adversarial. Please don't misunderstand. I'm a little frustrated. But the point of it is, is that I thought if I could at least offer this to go along with what he's already gone, and, but apparently it's already a done deal.
So you haven't talked to the owner yet?
No, sir. Open contact. I contacted them last week when I first got this notice, and nobody's called me back, and we've made any attempt to contact them.
I'm sorry.
I thought you said you hadn't been notified.
When I got this notice last week-
So you have been notified.
That was the first notice I got. I called the planning commission, spoke with the gentleman there, who then gave me the name of Mr. David Bray. I believe he just stood up here a minute ago, and also the owner of Gustaf Gustapo somebody, who now owns the Lopez Restaurant in the middle of Bartlett, is what I was told. And talked to him about the sale price of the property, what it was valued at, and offered to, you know, meet with them if they want to come out and look at the land and see if they want to go ahead and extend that subdivision on back. I'd be more receptive to do that. But again, you know, it's a decision to be made. What am I going to do?
This is a public hearing. You know, in our comments before, you have three minutes before and against. I think you're obviously against it, and that's fine, but you think your time has expired. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission? You can ask a question of anybody. You can ask the director or any questions that you have or any comments.
Let me ask a question. Is there any leeway to try to address this thing, or is it outside our perusal even to talk about it at this point? I don't know who that question goes to.
All of this before, you resist the special use permit.
Say again?
All of this before the commission has the special use permit tonight.
Yeah, we're doing this approving the special use permit or not approving.
Got it. Just a question.
Any other comments, questions?
It's hidden in the special use permit.
Seen none to entertain a motion. Are there any other questions? Charity entertain
a question or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
All right.
So we got a first and a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don Conway?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes. Okay. Moving forward, we have a public hearing on a special use permit for Goodwill. Kim, if you'll come forward and tell us about that.
The applicant, Raymond Couch, on behalf of Goodwill Memphis, is requesting your approval of a favorable recommendation to send to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for a special use permit to allow a second-hand retail use. The property is located at 7610 Highway 70, and it is located within the CH Highway Business Zoning District. The site is currently being used as a Baby Jack's barbecue restaurant, and the building is 1,800 square feet. The property is located within the corner shops of Highway 70 Commercial Subdivision. Back in April of 2025, the applicant initially wanted to use the site for an attended donation center, and it went before the Board of Zoning Appeals and the, as an appeal from the decision of the building official about the use of the property. The building official determined that that particular use would be better served in our industrial districts, and therefore they did not receive approval from the BZA. However, the applicant is back before you tonight with the use that is permitted for second-hand retail use with a special use permit. According to Article 5, Chart 1 of the zoning ordinance, second-hand retail uses require special use permits within the CH Highway Business Zone District. The applicant is proposing to utilize the same building as a retail store for their commerce items such as jewelry, collectibles, and alike. However, they will still have as a part of their business an attended donation center. Since they are proposing a second-hand retail use component that is allowed, again, with special use permit approval in the CH Highway Business District, then the attended donation center could be considered an ancillary use to the primary retail use. Surrounding zoning districts to the property include other CH businesses to the north, CL neighborhood businesses, and CH Highway businesses to the south. There is also RS-12 Residential Single Family to the east and CH Highway Business to the west. The surrounding uses include single-family residential, a bank, drive-thru restaurants, multi-tenant retail businesses, physical therapy office, and a grocery store. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend an approval with a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with the conditions as listed in this report.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor? Seeing none, thank you, Director Taylor. This is a special use permit. It's also a public hearing. I do want to remind everyone, if you're not sure, if you want to speak for or against, you need to pick one, because after that, we will not be taking any more statements. That's the way the public hearings work, and so if you're not sure for or against, you may just pick one, and you can come forward and speak. So also just remind everybody, there's three minutes max per person of the 20 minutes total for each side. I also want to ask Sam if he has any correspondence on this.
We have received one bit of correspondence. Would you like for me to read that into the record now or call the applicant?
Yes, please go ahead and read that in the record.
Okay. This is Rudolph Glenn and Amy Brown, 7491 Delmonico Cove. Attention Director Kim Taylor, we are writing to express our strong opposition to the proposed opening of a Goodwill thrift store in our community, especially since there is a Goodwill store at Stage and Highway 70 approximately two and a half miles from the proposed location. While Goodwill Industries may be widely recognized as a charitable organization, we believe that the presence of a Goodwill retail outlet in our neighborhood would have multiple negative consequences that outweigh any perceived benefits. From the Bartlett City Mayor's Vision Plan 2030, in 2023, the City of Bartlett obtained community input from a survey compiled by the University of Memphis. Respondents indicated that one of the five most essential focus areas moving forward, along with safety, city infrastructure, economic health, and parks, was improved retail offerings. Goodwill is not a quality retail store with improved retail offerings. The following is a summary of our concerns. Local small businesses are the backbone of our community, providing personalized service, reinvesting profits locally, and contributing to the unique character of our area. The introduction of a corporate-backed thrift store such as Goodwill can draw customers away from these businesses, often resulting in reduced revenue or even closures. This is particularly concerning for shops that cannot compete with Goodwill's brand recognition or pricing strategies. Also, any nearby small clothing stores or shops may be squeezed out by the increased Goodwill presence. Moreover, Goodwill status as a nonprofit provides it with tax advantages that are not extended to small local businesses, further skewing the competitive landscape. Because Goodwill is not a quality retail store with improved retail offerings, there is also a risk for decline in property values affecting neighborhood identity and decreasing the surrounding neighborhood's aesthetic values. The homeowners in our neighborhood are looking for quiet, high-quality, and less-dense area to live in. We don't want to see our streets become congested with more traffic and more people that might make it unsafe for our children and grandchildren to bike and walk safely in our neighborhood areas. Another reason for concern is that although promoted as environmentally friendly, Goodwill stores are known to generate substantial waste and sanitation problems. There have been multiple accounts of Goodwill stores accepting and reselling items infested with bedbugs or other pests posing serious health and sanitation risks. These infestations can be easily transferred to customers' homes, potentially creating community-wide issues that are costly and distressing to resolve. Also, a substantial portion of donations are unsellable and end up in landfills, contributing to the very waste problem the organization claims to help alleviate. The store's practices around disposing of unsold or damaged goods are rarely transparent and frequently problematic. Goodwill's labor practices have also been widely criticized, particularly regarding their use of subminimum wages for employees with disabilities under Section 14(c) of the Fair Labor Standards Act. While some stores may have reformed these practices, the organization's history and the inconsistency in how different branches are operated raise serious ethical concerns about supporting a company with such a track record. This practice undermines the organization's mission of providing equal pay and erodes public trust. In light of the above concerns, we respectfully urge you to reconsider the establishment of a Goodwill store in our neighborhood area. There is already a Goodwill store very close to our community, so we believe that opening one in our neighborhood is unnecessary and may cause visitors or potential new residents to perceive this area as economically depressed if there are too many second-hand stores in close proximity. We believe our neighborhood would be better served by supporting truly local businesses that prioritize community responsibility, improve the quality of life, and enhance the overall well-being of our area. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Sincerely, Rudolph Glenn and Amy Brown.
Thank you. Any other correspondence?
That's the only item we have.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward before the public hearing starts?
Ray Couch, 6895 Stage Road. So first off, we'll try to address the concerns that were in that letter. While I'm sure it was well-intended, it was not accurate. So first off, the retail concept we're planning on bringing is the first concept like this we've had in the Memphis market, which is collectibles by Goodwill, which means that we'll be selling jewelry, silver, china, antique glassware, coins, stamps, books that are collectible, sports memorabilia, art, vintage posters, collectible furniture, and one-of-a-kind items. We will be open in the store nine to seven, Monday through Saturday, and 10 to six on Sunday. The donation center will be attended from seven until seven. Goodwill does pride itself on putting back into the community. We employ 700 local people that earn a paycheck. Many of our employees cannot be employed anywhere else because they have barriers to employment. They need a little help. They need a little job coaching. They need a little support. We do not pay subminimum wage, never had at this Goodwill. We pay a good wage, competitive with other jobs of the same type in the marketplace. The recycling comment was completely uninformed. We pride ourselves in recycling, so if an item gets given to us and it doesn't meet our quality standard, or it doesn't sell, it goes into another operation we have called a bargain barn, which is two separate operations, one in Mississippi, one here in Memphis. If it doesn't sell there, it goes back into our warehouse, and we put it for sale on the commodities market. So we have people that buy our clothes. We have people that buy our plastics, our metal. We have a recycling program with Dell. We have all types of categories where they survey the market, and we get a truckload, a 53-foot trailer. They bid that out, and then the people come buy it. So we try everything we can to make sure nothing goes back into the landfill. We are very, very vigilant about that, and we work very hard to make sure that doesn't happen. So we are very, very, very recycling-conscious regardless of what was said in that remark. Also, with regards to bedbugs and those type things, let's address that. First, we have a list of items that we do not accept. Mattresses is one of them. If we receive a mattress for some odd reason, we have a policy where it has to be handled by gloves. It has to go in a plastic bag, and it has to be disposed of properly. The same with any hazardous waste that we get by mistake, paint, or whatever else. We work with a hazardous waste vendor to get rid of those items. So we're very conscious to make sure that we don't get something back in one of our stores that someone should not buy. We have a whole list of safety protocols, and we have a loss prevention department that works very hard to make sure that that does not happen. So does that answer those, some of those questions that were brought up?
I think so. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I've got one.
Yes, sir.
Out of the 1,800 square feet in that building, how many square feet are going to be devoted to- specifically to the selling space?
Very good question. We're still working on our final architectural plans, but there'll be somewhere around 35% of the building devoted to that because we will need, the things that get donated, we'll be looking through them for those treasures. So we will need some space to sort that goods that will go to that floor out there.
I got a question. Why? Why there? Why do you want to build there? Or, I'm sorry, why do you want to take that building over?
Why? Because the demographics of Bartlett with the high income and the density would support an operation like that.
You're two and a half miles from your other building?
Well, these are items that we typically sell only on the internet right now. They're not offered in the market. It's not the same merchandise that's in the other store.
But there's going to be donations put there. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So there's going to be boxes somewhere along there where people can put donations in there?
No, there'll be employees there to accept the donations.
Okay. Because we've seen this in our city before where people have put these boxes, I'm sorry, these companies have put these boxes in here and then they're overloaded and then code enforcement or whoever's got to come out and write them up or get them removed from there. And that's why I'm saying it. We're not there to police, I'm sorry. We're not there to police, I talk with my hands, I'm sorry. We are not there to police that area, or the city is not. That's your responsibility, but we all know that that goes kind of through the cracks sometimes.
Well, it does anywhere behind the shopping center or anything, but your point's well-taken. 35 years ago, Goodwill collected all their donations in those boxes you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
We haven't had those for years here. Now, there are some other organizations that do collect that way and they actually plagiarize on our good name because those boxes are painted the same color as our corporate colors. And we would only hope that the cities enact ordinances against being able to collect like that. There are some cities in some states where you can't drop off those boxes and collect anymore. And I would encourage every municipality to do that, to make sure that the donations are legitimately collected and they get to the organization they're supposed to go to. A lot of these will say they're going to the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the whatever ranch. They're really a competitor that's buying it for profit and they give those people sometimes nothing and sometimes just pennies on the dollar. We have a very large organization in Alabama that does that. They're creeping in the Mississippi right now doing that same thing. So that was a very good point.
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, the city, our ordinances require, do not require a box or cannot have a box in the city. Is that correct?
So with an unattended box, that is not permitted within the city of Bartlett. It would have to be located within an industrial zone property as a donation acceptance and distribution center.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. You said the current, this new location, only 35% of it would be used to sell this different merchandise that you don't do at the other store now? Is that right?
Approximately, yes, sir.
Why couldn't you do it at the other store? I mean, you're not talking about a whole lot of space and you've got a location right now.
This is a completely different type of operation. So we are looking for the higher-end customer that you have in Bartlett. We're looking to do everything that was just said in the letter that they were opposed to, and we picked this location for that. We have a very nice bookstore and some collectible items in Collierville for the same reason.
Okay. Any other questions?
Back to the 35%. You said, I think you're starting with 1,800 square feet. I'm not good at doing math in my head, but that's probably less than 500 square feet that would be devoted to the sale.
Kind of run close 550, something like that. Yes, sir. We still haven't figured out exactly where the demise and wall goes based on construction and utilities and that sort of thing and the type of fixtures we'd purchase for it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to the public hearing. I do want to remind you, if you're not sure what side, you have to pick for or against, and you'll be heard. There won't be any time after that, after the public hearing for or against to speak. So we're going to start with the for. Anybody for the application, please come forward. Please come forward. And Rod, you have three minutes.
My name is Steve Stewart. I live at 311 Cristoville Cove. You know Cristoville, where they're building all the stuff coming up on our back, back of our street. As a resident of Bartlett, I'm in favor of this new concept for Goodwill, going in the old baby jacks. I've worked with Goodwill for a number of years in the past and I live, Cristoville comes out on stage right there by the Goodwill. So I drive by that location every day. This morning, I made sure to take a look down at the donation to see if there was anything down there. There was a couple of things low, close to the door, but if I wasn't looking, I wouldn't see them. And they keep the yard up. There's a, there's a team that manicures that yard better than some of the other businesses in Bartlett need to start cutting their yard. But these people aren't even Bartlett. They're on stage, just outside of Bartlett, and they keep their yard cut. So you, no doubt, they'll do the same thing for this new location. They are good about letting their patrons and their customers know where to leave donations. Right now, I'm in the sign business, so I do signs that say, "No donations after hours." This is not allowed. And they make sure that that's on the door, that's on the building. So, and that tends to work. For Carville, we, we went through the same thing with Carville, with the bookstore. Bookstore is absolutely beautiful. They built it, put it in an old bank. It's got a, it's got a donation center in Carville, in the city of Carville, which is hard to deal with when it comes to code. They've got an ADC donation center. They've got the bookstore right there on Poplar, right there in the main strip. And then they've got the retail store that's actually over at Carriage Crossing. And you, I don't think they've had any issues with the town of Carville with people leaving the items overnight. So that's just comparable to us out here. We talked about that. I think that as far as it being collectibles, you know, you've got David Weimer over that has his jewelry store. It's not in Bartlett. We're talking about a place that's going to be in Bartlett. I understand, two and a half miles down the road, you've got a big store, but that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about the same sort of thing that they did with the bookstore in Carville. They've got a big store. That's not very many miles away from that bookstore. But this offers something, a little bit more to people out here. I have one more reason that I'm, I'm good for, love to see this Goodwill collectible store go out here.
Sorry, appreciate it. I need you to wrap up. Their time is expired.
My daughter has a friend that moved down here from Wisconsin. And this girl is a shy person and not very good with the public. And Goodwill, two years ago, put her to work and she's been working there for two years at the Stage Road. Their mission is a good mission.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
All right.
Appreciate it. We had one more come forward. Again, this is for, where are the for part of the?
This is for.
All right, thank you.
My name is Will Clem. I'm, I live in Arlington at 12251.
I'm sorry, sir, you have to live in Bartlett.
Okay. I'm the property owner.
I'm sorry, property owner. I'm sorry. Didn't know that. Thank you.
So property owner, 7610 Highway 7. And my address is 12251 Grand Ridge Lane.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm here in support of Goodwill. So we've had our business here for 15 years and I'm not a resident, but it feels like home. So I'm really invested in the community. And we worked really hard to find a really good reputable owner to take over where we left off. And this is our last location, so we've sold three and this is the last one to go. And then we're retiring. I've spoken to the staff and told them what comes tomorrow is we're shutting down. It's going to be an empty building and put a for-sale sign up. But the guys were really excited about the opportunity for a new business to take over right where we left off. I'd put in some really good recommendations and they'd all hopefully be able to have a place to work instead of filing for unemployment. We've been there 15 years and about 80% of the people that work in our restaurants, they don't drive. They live right there within walking distance of that restaurant and they walk to work. And we've got some of the same people that have been there for 15 years and they like to continue working there if possible, just under a different concept. The other thing I'd like to talk about is I live in Arlington and we've got a drop-off center there, Goodwill Donation Center. I've never heard any neighbors complain about it. I mean, it's, we actually all use it. We, keeps the garage cleaned out. As soon as stuff starts to pile up, the wife will say, "Hey, it's time to make a Goodwill run." Drop some stuff off. And also, as part of the packet, the mayor of Collierville wrote a really nice recommendation letter. I know it's not allowed to be read, but they, she was, said that they heard a lot of the same kind of opposition initially, but then once they got in there, they said, "Wow, this was a great addition to our community." Wrote a really nice letter in support of it. Same way at Arlington. I think that our, our neighborhood and community really, really likes the Goodwill location there. So yeah, I'd say that I'm in support of it and I think it would be a great addition to the community. The last point I had was as part of the application packet too, they presented a, an architectural drawing for how it looks. Saying, "Man, when I saw that thing, I mean, it looks really nice, much better than anything we ever did with the building." So I think that's something to take a look at is I think that it's going to look nice. It'll be a good-conditioned community. And I really believe in the mission, so I'd love to see Goodwill go in where we left off.
Any other comments?
Thanks.
Any others for? Any others for? Thank you. Just state your name and address for record.
Sure. I'm Chris Woods. My home is at 9150 Hunter Springs Drive and my business is at 8068. And I've been a resident of Bartlett ever since they annexed me. My business has been in Bartlett ever since they annexed me. So, but I'm happy for it, believe it or not. I mean, I really am. I don't mind paying those taxes. We do, we do work for Goodwill. We've worked for them since 2006 and they're one of the best-run organizations that I've ever been worked with. They manage their facilities. They try to prevent the stacking of goods, you know, after dark and after hours. You can't totally, can't totally prevent it, but they do all they can. You know, they have attendants on site. And I think we even offered on this facility to put a gate in, gated off at night. So anyway, I'm just, you know, hope that y'all will see that, that they are, they make somebody a good, they'd be good for the Bartlett. They're also in Carville, Arlington and Millington. So there's something has to be said about that. Carville is probably as tough as anybody we deal with. Anyway, I'm for it.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Any others for? Any others for the applicants? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the, the against. Anybody against it? Please come forward. State your name and address for record.
My name is Roy Stroud. I live at 7504 Delmonico Cove, which I have for over three decades. So I actually live behind the area, unlike some of the other people who are for it and not in the area. I used to operate a business and one of the businesses I operated was next door to a thrift store. I go over to Goodwill, I donate. It's a great cause. It's a great organization. However, at seven o'clock, unless you're going to post a guard there from seven at night until it reopens in the morning, people come by and you cannot control what they drop off. They do clean out their garage. They dump stuff there and leave it piled. It's garbage. And customers drive by and many customers would not come into my business beside there because they saw a pile of junk that's set there. It's the image it creates, and I don't think that's the image that Bartlett wants to create to try to build this community. I keep reading that we want to attract businesses. We want to attract young people to come here. I don't think this is the ideal thing to accomplish that goal. So I'm totally against this. I just don't see the need for it. I go over to Goodwill. I drop off things periodically. I have no problem going over there. They're a good cause, but not for this location. It's not something that the people that I've talked to throughout my neighborhood are for. So I ask you to please turn this down for the citizens of this area. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have any others, anybody that wants to speak against, please come forward. If y'all want, just a second time, anybody that wants to speak against, if y'all want to make a line, we can do that.
Good evening.
Just state your name and address for record, please, sir.
My name's Tim Callum. I live at 3730 Appling Lake, which is one of 1,000 feet. I do have a few questions.
Excuse me, sir. Can you speak to the mic a little? Because that's a little harder to hear.
Yeah, I'm a low talker too, so sometimes I mumble. So if you don't understand me, please ask me to, you know, speak up. I appreciate that. I do have a few questions. One, so Mr. Stevenson mentioned that they have been through this a few times with Goodwill in various areas. And I was just wondering, is he affiliated with Goodwill? Or I understand Mr. Wood works for him.
That would be off, that'd be off the records, sir. I don't know. You welcome your comments, though, if you have something you would like to present.
Well, sure, 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 I do. Yeah, so I'm here, I've got, there's three areas of concern, basically. One's pollution, another one's precedent, and the other one's standing. Okay? The first one, I believe everybody, it's the elephant in the room. You know, it's obviously, putting a Goodwill in this location is going to create a lot of congestion, noise pollution. People are going to be dropping off household items that they can't get rid of, old sporting goods, equipment, clothes they can't get rid of, especially with the new development down the road with the apartment complexes coming in. Anytime somebody moves, comes or goes, I'm afraid this is going to be just pretty much a drop-off point. Okay? There's a concern for the health, the safety and the welfare of the community, basically. I live within 1,000 feet of the area. If you allow it to go forward, it's going to create unnecessary trash, noise pollution. They've talked about, so you're going to have congestion with cars coming in, people dropping stuff off. One of the other speakers has already mentioned they have trucks coming in, 50-foot, three-foot trailers. They're also going to have apparently trucks coming in to cart off all the hazardous materials that are dropped off. And so this is not news to you guys. I'm just kind of resumming what's, or resumizing what was in the report. So I mean, there's obviously a concern there. And so there, you know, that's the pollution part. The precedent part of it is that once you gradual, or grant a special use permit to a business like this in this area, what is going to, it's going to be, basically, it's going to open the gate to other businesses who may want to start up in the area. In other words, if, say for instance, Goodwill starts at this 1,800 square foot location, there's a big location right next to the Kroger down there, right across the street from it. So what, in two years, how about they say, "Well, we want to move to the Kroger and we want to expand." I mean, this is a drop-off location right now, but maybe they want to expand to do something else. The board's not going to have the opportunity to come back and say, "No, you can't do that because you've already granted a use, a special use permit right across the road." And if you did, you're going to invite a bunch of unnecessary litigation to the city of Bartlett in trying to defend that action. The third thing, or the third area that I guess, that I have concerns with has to do with standing and then, you know, why we're really here. I think-
I will remind you, limited to three minutes, so.
Okay, well, so this is going to take about 20 more seconds, all right? So they've admitted, or you all know, the first time they tried this, or they tried to go for the building official or whomever, it was rejected, right? Because it's not an appropriate use. It should be in an industrial area. So basically what they did, they, when they weren't approved for the alternative, or the intended drop-off area, they came back and they said, "Well, we're going to make it a retail area now." And so, but we're still going to have the drop-off component. And so, but we're still going to have the drop-off component.
And we appreciate your comments, sir.
Yeah, no, one second. I just, I, I think I need to say this real quick. They're talking about the e-commerce, on their own website, the e-commerce.
So, your time has expired. We have three minutes. Your time has expired.
Goodwill Inc. does not, is not.
Your time has expired, sir.
Not recognized.
Please have a seat. Please have a seat. Please have a seat last time. Please have a seat. Thank you. Okay. Now, we'll remind everyone, three minutes, three minutes. So, the next person to come forward, if they like, that against, anybody else against? Please come forward, state your name and address for record.
Patricia Stroud, 7504 Delmonico Cove. And we're in the neighborhood that's directly behind this, just off of Aplin. I don't think the big problem my neighbors and I have with this has anything really to do with Goodwill. We're not saying Goodwill is a bad thing. We, even though maybe it wouldn't be our first choice to have a shop there that was a Goodwill shop, we would not be here like we are, except for that it's going to be majority donation center. And we've all seen that it's not Goodwill's fault. This is just human nature. People will drive through, it'll be an easy on and off, off of summer there, and they will just dump stuff. And the employees will have to come in the next morning and clean it up. And I'm not saying that they won't try very hard to make sure that they limit the inconvenience of that and the unsight witness of that. But people being what people are like, we would really hate to see this where it feels like it's basically at the opening to our presidential neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others? We have 13 more minutes on the clock. So, anybody else who want to come forward? Thank you.
Melanie Bush, 3904 Wheeler's Run Cove. I live in the Wheeler's Grove subdivision. I'm the HOA secretaries and I'm here, my husband's the vice president. Anyway, he's a Shelby County Sheriff's deputy. He couldn't be here, but he wanted me to come and speak on his behalf because there, he works in a district where there is a donation center and he said they've had lots of complaints about it. They have to, the business owners, like the other gentleman said, he, they have business owners that call and say, we got to work this morning, there's a pile of junk outside our door that, you know, goes to Goodwill. Also, I'm of the same, I feel like I'm, I mean, I feel like I've, everybody has said everything I feel like that I feel like too. Like, we're not saying that Goodwill's not a good, a good organization, but I just don't think this is something that needs to be in that area right there. And, I mean, we're already, Wheeler's Grove's already about to have a car wash in our, at the back of our subdivision, basically in my front yard. So, I really just don't think that having a Goodwill drop-off is just a good thing for that corner where people are going to, like you said, drive by, you know, people will leave stuff out there. And my husband said they have gotten calls where there have been vagrants going through the donations that have been left out there. And anyway, I just don't think that it's a good idea for the Ellendale area.
Thank you. Just state your name and address for record, please.
Hi, Cheryl Edwards, 7501 Delmonico Cove. And I am against it. The area that you're talking about is, is heavily residential. You know, right north of there is Aplin and I've loved, I've lived in my area for 14 years. I've loved seeing young families moving in on Aplin with the older houses, investing, landscaping. I mean, it's really been a great addition to that area. Then you have Fourth, right across from that, Delmonico Cove. So, I mean, people who live there really are investing in their homes and I think we feel it would potentially, you know, affect our property values. And we feel like we're investing in Bartlett when we invest, you know, in our homes. And to the point of some of the other comments for, I'm familiar with the drop-off, the bookstore in Collierville. That's in Collierville Business District on Poplar Avenue. There's not residential right around that. And the drop-off in Arlington, I was just there last week, it is in that shopping center where the old Kroger was on Highway 70. And so, it, it's manned, but it's not in a residential area. So, I hope you'll consider this when you are making your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We have 10 minutes left on the clock. So, anybody else want to speak against the application?
My name is Larry Patrick, 7537 Delmonico Cove. I don't think anyone in our neighborhood is against Goodwill. We don't want to say that. I think the biggest thing is a collection. Now, if they want to open up just a retail store with no collection, I don't think anybody would have a problem with that. It's a collection. Some time ago, McDonald's come in, Taco Bell was there, Sonic's there. If you haven't gone down Aplin in a while, you don't see the trash. And my wife is adamant about picking up the trash. And we're afraid if the collection store, people drop it off, it cannot be dictated about what hours because people may go there at 2:00 a.m. in the morning and drop something off. And who says it's going to stay there and stay there and stay there? They're not going, they're not going to pick it up and move it somewhere immediately. It may add up and add up and add up and that's going to cause problems. So, I would urge you religiously, look at it and say, no. No to this concept because we don't want it in our neighborhood. And some of our neighbors have said, if it goes in, we're moving out of Bartlett. Thank you.
Thank you. Either, any of us, we're continuing the hearing, so any other against comments you want to make? We have nine minutes on the clock left. Any other comments against the application? See movement here? Do we have somebody? Okay. Okay. Just, y'all can line up if you like. Name and address for record, please.
Patricia Patrick, 7537 Delmonico Cove. There's not much else I can say that everybody else hasn't said, but just like everyone else, we're worried about the trash, the congestion, that, that intersection there is terrible anyway, and I am the trash picker-up. And it's horrible. We need somebody patrolling with the police car and give everybody a ticket, who throws their Sonic stuff out and McDonald's stuff out. And this won't be any different. And with the other store being right down the way, they can just throw in the jewelry section down there too and we'll all be happy because it's close enough by. And I've spoken to several neighbors who live on Aplin right there, five or six families own Delmonico Cove, that whole row back there is Delmonico Cove. And we're very much against this being in our neighborhood because I think it will bring down our property values and it's just, it's just going to be tacky and nasty and just not what we want. So, thank you very much for voting against it.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have anybody else? Okay, just state your name and address for record, please.
My name is Amy Brown and I live at 7491 Delmonico Cove. And I am the wife of Rudolph Brown, the writer of Only Letter, and I stick by everything I said and we are against it. And I agree with everything that all my neighbors and everyone else said that came out. We are totally against it. We don't think it's good. I don't think it is in line with the mayor's plan. I really don't. And I think that he should stick by what he says. I don't think it's good for Bartlett, not in our area, not where we are. We already have a Goodwill. There's plenty of room in that Goodwill to put 35% of what he wants to do and make an area for antiques and jewelry and everything in the one they've already got, two miles from where we live. It would work out just fine. They can bring somebody in there to design a little area for that. I think that would work out better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else speaking, speaking against the application? Okay, if you'll state your name and address for record, we have seven, just reminded you, we have seven more minutes on the clock, so.
I'm Charlotte White and I live at 7526 Fourth Avenue. I'm closer than any of them to where this will be. And I just, I think Goodwill's a good organization, just like everybody else, but I do think there's one close enough that they can have their drop-off and put that there. And I do think it would hurt our property values and it would also be detrimental to our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have six minutes on the clock. Anybody else speaking against, you state your name and address for record, please?
My name's Rudolph Brown. I'm at 7491 Delmonico Cove. We are the ones that wrote the letter and we stand by what's in that letter. We researched it and that is fact. He can deny it, but show the proof where he's denying it. If you look at the Goodwill store on stage, if he's wanting to put in some standalone building, there is plenty of room in his parking lot and on that property to build enough for 630 square feet to put in his jewelry store and collectibles. That corner, you have a school that's less than a quarter of a mile north of there, or south of there. It's right next door to the, to the Kroger, across the street, you have the police station there. You have a Dollar General next to it. We're not real happy about that business, but it's there and it went in before we had a chance to say anything. This place is small. There's one way in basically and one way out. And the congestion that they're talking about will not be good. If you're coming into our neighborhood, Fourth Third, Delmonico Cove, Sunny Brook back there, and you're coming down Aplin, what's the first thing you're going to see? You're going to see the bank on the left and you're going to see the Goodwill on the right. That's not what we want to see for our property values. I urge you to please consider our objections to this business. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have time for one more. Anybody else need to speak against it? Anybody else want to speak against the applicant, application? Seen none at close of the public hearing. Any questions from the commission to the applicant or to the, our staff?
This may be an inappropriate one, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What is your, what is your minimum wage that you start, that's your people down here on stage? If it's not a fair question, just say so.
This is Dana Black, Mayor's Senior, Vice President of Operations and she's over HR.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, yes, so our hourly employees do start at $12 an hour. Our, then we move up from that. We have key holders that are 15, but our TLCs and our AC, we call them TLCs, our store managers and everything, they start a base of $50,000 a year plus. And we offer a whole bunch of benefits for them.
But your, but your workers are at $12.
They start, our hourly workers start at 12 and we cover 90% of their health insurance and benefits, so we.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so I, you know, I want you to, we do, it's not, and even like some of our other contracts, we can make pay more than that. So, the sub-minimum wage is not a valid point anymore. We do work to get them up to that, what we're working toward is the $15 minimum. But as we grow and we have more donations, that allows us to help with this process. So, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? For Director Taylor or the applicant? This is, the public hearing is closed, sir. Thank you. This is among the commission, any questions you might have? Seen no questions? Do we have questions or are we, we only entertain a motion? Do I entertain, have we entertained a motion? Seen none? Any discussion among the members?
To get it on the record, I'll move approval.
Okay, we got a vote for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a first and a second. See if you'll call a roll.
And again, this is a favorable recommendation that would go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, no matter how the vote goes, it would still go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for them to approve or deny the public hearing at a future public hearing meeting. John Conroy?
No.
Greg Easton?
No.
Jim Lamb?
No.
Ken Demetrio?
No.
David Hunt?
No.
Don Conaway?
No.
Paul Kaiser?
No.
Alderman Young?
No.
James Reed?
No.
That concludes the business on these second, secondhand retail store for Goodwill tonight. We're moving on. You might like to leave from that party, you may do so. We're going to be moving on to the Hookah Lounge Bar and Tavern. It's 2965 North Germantown Road. Kim, he'll come forward and tell us about that.
Mr. Willis White Jr., Honor of Sticks and Stones, is requesting Planning Commission approval of a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for a special use permit for the operation of a Hookah Lounge Bar Tavern slash Smoking Lounge. The property is located at 2965 North Germantown Road, Suite 111, and is, is within the CH Highway Business Zoning District. Back in November of 2020, the Planning Commission made an unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for a tavern, cocktail lounge, nightclub, bar use for the subject property. On January 12th, 2021, the Board of Mayor and Alderman voted against granting Sticks and Stones a special use permit. The applicant decided then to move forward with the business without a liquor or live music venue. On January 21st, 2021, Mr. White sent an email to Director Taylor stating that he would like to move forward and to serve beer, beer with a content of less than 5% alcohol to be consumed on premise only. No liquor will be served on the premises. No stage, no live music, no DJ will happen at, within our establishment. That is quoted from the email. On January 29th, 2021, Mr. White described his business on the business license as follows. "Sticks and Stones will be a cigar smokers lounge and restaurant. We are an age-restricted establishment for ages 21 and up. We will ID customers as they enter. We will apply to serve beer, however, no liquor or live entertainment." It was recently been brought to our attention that liquor was being served as well as Sticks and Stones were hosting DJs and live entertainment. Hours of operation were being held from 6:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., which is later than a normal restaurant establishment would stay open. Again, according to the, to Article 5, Chart 1 of the Bartlett Zoning Ordinance, a special use permit is required in the CH Highway Business Zoning District to operate a Hookah Bar Tavern Smoking Lounge. The surrounding uses include car dealerships, childcare center, pediatric offices, restaurant, a hotel, an instrument store, fitness gym, a physical therapy clinic, an insurance office, retail stores, other offices, and the gas stations and convenience stores. Staff has reviewed this application and based on past approvals and what has transpired recently, we recommend an unfavorable recommendation for this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions from the sta, commission, please? Go ahead.
The fact, they were, they were, the hours and then they were serving liquor, what period of time does that encompass? Is it, how recently would that be? Six months ago, a week ago?
I would like to defer to Trey. When were they reported?
That was about three, four months, three months ago, maybe.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Director Taylor, the commission? Seen none, thank you, Director Taylor. Is the applicant here? Like to speak. Like to speak? Is the applicant here, like to speak? Seen none? Have a question about that. Can we have a hearing without the applicant? Any of the staff that wanted to answer that? Can we have a hearing without an applicant present?
We got a public hearing.
Okay, so we'll have a public hearing without the applicant. All right, very good, thank you. So we will start the public hearing. I do need to ask Sam, any correspondence for that?
Yes, we have one letter.
Thank you. If you'll read those in the record, please.
Yes. Dear Bartlett officials, please consider this letter as an official vote against the proposal for the addition of a hookah bar lounge and tavern cocktail lounge nightclub or bar to be located at 2965 North Germantown Road, number 120. It is disappointing that Bartlett, as a family-oriented community, would entertain the addition of a tavern as described in the public hearing notice. This type of business can entertain late-night activities that do not lend to the family atmosphere Bartlett is known for. As an owner and/or resident of a neighboring property, we do not feel this is a good fit for our local community. The city of Bartlett works hard to keep the standard high. Please consider those who call Bartlett their home and protect our investments by denying the approval of this type of establishment. Thank you. DMB Holdings, One LLC.
Okay, is that all you have, Sam?
That is all we have, yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to the public hearing. Anyone speak for the application for the Bar and Tavern, Hookah Lounge Bar and Tavern? Anybody for? Seen none? That closes the four part. Anybody against the Hookah Lounge Bar and Tavern? Please fix that forward. Anybody against? Seen none that closes our public hearing? Any questions from the commissioners? Any at all? Seen none, entertain a question or a motion?
Make a motion, we send an unfavorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. If you'll please call a roll. Yes, we had the first and Jack was the second. So we had Jim and then Jack. Sound like a story, doesn't it?
And again, this is a vote for a non-favorable recommendation that would be sent forward to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and the Board of Mayor and Alderman would then ultimately approve or deny the special use permit request.
Correct.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Okay, that closes that public hearing for the Hookah Lounge Bar and Tavern, and moving on to the Waters that Barlet Mixed Use Development. Kim, if you'll let us know about that, please introduce that.
Ms. Heidi Spring with the STOa Group is requesting Planning Commission approval of a favorable recommendation for a special use permit to allow our residential mixed-use development. The development is proposed to take place what is currently the northeast corner of New Brunswick Road and Brunswick Road, which will later become Highway 64. The property is located within the CH Highway Business Zoning District. According to Article 6, Section 29 of the Bartlett Zoning Ordinance, a special use permit is required to move forward with submitting development plans for a residential mixed-use development. The surrounding zoning districts to this property include IP Planned Industrial Park to the north, the City of Memphis Commercial to the south, and RS10 Residential Single Family to the east, and also CH Highway Business to the east and west. The surrounding uses include an industrial park, a pest control business, an auto body and paint shop, a new and used motor vehicle sales dealership, restaurants, multi-tenant retail, a behavioral hospital, and a gas station with the convenience store. This particular proposal will include 312 flats along with 6.6 acres of commercial, well, might as well say seven acres of commercial, which includes quick-service restaurant and commercial businesses. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with conditions as listed in the staff report for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor? Any questions? Thank you, Director Taylor. Okay, this is a public hearing. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak?
My name is Blake Brinson. I live at 538 Joseph Street in Walens, Louisiana. I'm here representing our development firm, STOa Group. We are generally okay with all of the conditions that are in the staff comments. We plan on working with staff between tonight and our next meeting. I'd like to yield the remainder of my time to address any questions that you all might
Any questions for the applicant? No commission?
On the flats, what projection for rental rates do you have in mind?
Sir, we build all luxury Class A flat-style residential units. These, our one-bedroom rents will start about $1,700 a month, two-bedrooms around $2,000 a month, three-bedrooms $2,400 a month.
How much do you say for a one-bedroom?
$1,700 roughly. Yeah, they're all, we consider luxury Class A, so it's granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, full amenity center, 8,000-square-foot amenity center, full gym, co-working space, game room, resort style pool.
Any other questions for the applicant? The renditions are showing three-story, is that all you're looking at on those?
Yes, sir. It's three-story, roughly 36 feet. Yes.
I know this is premature, but construction background, I gotta ask the questions.
I understand.
Any other questions?
Yep, Sam?
So I did speak with the applicant prior to the meeting, and there is this condition 26 about access to New Brunswick. She'll be limited to two driveways. They did want to add another possible drive may be allowed depending on traffic study. So we're okay with that. I just wanted to get that in the record.
So you're saying staff is okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be right-in, right-out, but it would depend on the traffic study.
That was 26, that was out of 26.
Mm-hmm, under the engineering conditions for this.
Also, was that one of the pictures where it showed the green, both of them coming out onto New Brunswick, I believe it is?
Yeah.
That one. Back up, Sam.
So currently, they're showing four entrances to New Brunswick. We limited them to one full access with a signalized at Wolf River and an additional right-in, right-out, and they're asking, dependent on the traffic study, would they be allowed an additional right-in, right-out? And we're okay with putting that in the report.
Thank you. Any other questions, commission? Everybody understand that? Any questions, any clarification needed on that? Item 26.
They would still need to meet all the minimum distances and so.
Right, that's okay. Everybody okay with that? Yeah, Kim?
Too much of Brunswick Road is not in Bartlett.
All of Brunswick Road is not in Bartlett. Well, the right-of-way of-
The right-of-way of that New Brunswick that's on, I mean, a Brunswick that's on the south is not in Bartlett until it gets like around the curve to start heading north.
Yeah.
Past, yes. It's pretty much, if you've ever driven down there, there's overhead electric poles, so kind of where those electric poles end is kind of where it moves into Bartlett. The roadway is also different, but it doesn't, it's not really like a clear delineation point that I can tell you by just looking at it.
Can I add something? I need to clarify on that a little bit.
Michael Rogers from Fisher &amp; Arnold, 9180 Crestwood Hills Drive. When we were coming through with the High V, we had a lot of discussion with TDOT and Chevy County on that road. It is true Bartlett annexed to the north, north right-of-way line of TDOT's right-of-way, which includes that section of Old Brunswick. City of Memphis only annexed to, I think, the center line of Chevy Drive right in there. Maybe they come a little bit further over, but there's that gap in there that appears at Chevy County. So we were approaching Chevy County about road closure when we were looking at the High V going through Chevy County, and what Darren Sanders, the county engineer, said that Chevy County does not maintain that road. They don't care about that road, that y'all in Bartlett can do whatever you want with the road. TDOT also told us that, hey, we'll have to get a permit to work within the right-of-way, but they have no interest in the, they're fine with the closure, nothing with it, we don't have to do anything term for closure. Since that time, Darren Sanders has shared with me, and I'm not attorney, I'll leave it up to him, but there was a state law passed by the state legislature that says when two municipalities annex property on both sides of a road and leave it annexed, that whoever was the last to annex takes responsibility for that road. So even though it's never been annexed, Chevy County would not be at liability for that road. It would either be whoever was the last to annex up to that point, the City of Memphis or Bartlett. But in any case, City of Memphis claims not theirs either. So I think, basically what I'm saying, when it comes down to it, it's going to be working with Bartlett staff and what they see, but everybody agrees that Brunswick needs to be cut off from New Brunswick because it doesn't meet any of the criteria for clearance with intersection of 64 and everything. So it'll just be a matter, we'll be working with Aaron through our traffic study and stuff, a matter of how we close that off, you know, what we do with it, whether we do a cul-de-sac like we proposed with High V, or we do something a little different, but basically cuts it off from New Brunswick.
Thank you. Any other questions from the applicant? Any other questions for the applicant? Anything else? All right, thank you. Appreciate it. I do want to address that real quickly because that's something that's, could be an issue for the trader or the staff. The closing off of that road, is that going to create any hardship with the people living back there? Because a lot of people use it as an access point to get to other neighborhoods, or has anybody addressed that? The trader, if you like?
They still have access on Laduroe. The only access that is shorter, I think, to go that way would be Lakeside, and I think they're, we're generally okay with that being closed off. I don't want to speak for them, so I shouldn't say that, but I believe we've talked to them previously, but there is that full access on Laduroe. We have spoken about closing the road before.
Any other questions for the, from the commission about that or anything? Okay, so we're going to go to the public hearing. Going to go to the public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak in favor of this, please come forward. Anybody for the application? Seen none? Anybody against the application, please come forward. This, we're reminding everybody this for the Waters Bartlett Mixed Use Development. Anybody against it, please come forward. Seen none? That's going to close the public hearing. Going to go back to the commission. Any questions, clarification needed by the commission? Any discussion among the commissioners? Seen none, entertain a motion or questions?
Make the motion, send it forward to the Alderman.
Okay, we have a first, any seconds?
Second.
Okay. We got a first and a second. David and James?
All right, and again, this is a favorable recommendation going forward to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and ultimately, they would approve or deny the special use permit at another public hearing.
Thank you. If you'll call the roll, please.
David Hunt?
No.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
No.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
No.
Paul Kaiser?
No.
Okay, I think that's a five-four.
Five-four, yes.
So it does pass as a favorable recommendation to the Mayor, Board, and Alderman. Okay? Okay, we thank you. We're going to be moving on to your final plans. If you'll come forward and tell us about that. JTB subdivision.
Mr. Russ Brassfield with Barge Design Solutions on behalf of the property owner is requesting Planning Commission approval of a final plan for the JTB subdivision. The property is located at 8223 Highway 70, and it is within the CH Highway Business Zoning District. On July 1, 2024, the Planning Commission approved both the master and construction plans for the JTB subdivision. On April 7, 2025, the Planning Commission approved a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to rezone lots 1, 2, and 3 of the JTB subdivision from CL Neighborhood Commercial to CH Highway Business Commercial to reflect the pre-existing conditions and uses of the subject property. The applicant tonight is proposing to subdivide 5.089 acres of property into three lots. Lot 1 will be 2.124 acres, and it is the site of an existing automotive shop. Lot 2 is proposed to be .591 acres and is the site of a contractor's office for traditional plumbing. And Lot 3 is proposed to be 2.374 acres, and it is a vacant lot. Access to the subdivision will be from two existing curb cuts on Highway 70. The applicant will be prohibiting a number of uses on the property that the ordinance would possibly allow with special use permits, and the applicant has done this on a voluntary basis, and those prohibited uses will be recorded on the final plat. With that being said, staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with conditions as listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions about the application for Director Taylor? Seen none, do entertain a motion?
Uh, applicant?
I'm sorry, Sam?
The applicant?
Applicant?
Applicant.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Thank you. Yeah, applicant, I'd come forward and speak? Okay? Okay, they wait, I'll go back to entertain a motion. Now you see them? Entertain a motion?
Pro.
Okay, you got a first?
Second.
Got a first and a second?
All right.
Okay? And if you'll call a roll?
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes. Thank you very much. Okay, going forward, we got a re-subdivision of Lot 8 Independent Pole Bearers Society, number 6 subdivision, and 8754 Independent Road. Kim, if you'll introduce that to us, please.
Yes. William Sawtill with Parker, Estes, and Associates on behalf of the property owner is requesting Planning Commission approval of a final plan to re-subdivide Lot 8 of the Independent Pole Bearers Society, number 6 subdivision. The property is located on the north- The property is located on the northwest at a curve along Independent Road, just east of Brunswick Road and north of Highway 70. The property was created in November of 1950 as Lot 8 of the first addition of the Independent Pole Bearers Society, number 6 subdivision. Tonight, the applicant is requesting final approval to subdivide the 1.258 acre lot into two residential lots, with Lot 8A being .557 acres and Lot 8B being .682 acres. Access for Lot 8A will be from an existing driveway on Independent Road, while access to Lot 8B will be from a new curb cut on Independent Road. These lots will remain as a two lot, as two lots, for the future development of, of houses, one per lot. With that being said, staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor? Seeing none, thank you, Director Taylor. The applicant like to come forward? We have the applicant here for the re-subdivision. Is the applicant not here? Okay. Can we, I guess we can still vote on that, even though the applicant's not here?
The applicant was forwarded the staff report, so I just wanted to put that on the record.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Uh, the applicant was forwarded the staff report.
I'm sorry, one more time.
The applicant was emailed the staff report.
Okay.
And the agenda to attend tonight. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll move forward with it. And, uh, any questions for the commission before we entertain a motion? Any questions? Any questions at all? Entertain a, entertain a motion or a question?
I move we approve.
A first? Do I have a second? I'm not quite sure who got the second. Okay? Okay, got a first and a second?
All right, after taking a look at the rewind, we have a second, all right. Jack Young?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, that passes, thank you. And moving on to site plans, this is for the Raleigh Primitive Baptist Church parking lot. Kim, if you'll introduce that to us, appreciate it.
Josh Burnett with the Renaissance, with the Renaissance Design Studio, is requesting planning commission approval of a revised site plan for the Raleigh Primitive Baptist Church to add a parking lot. The property is located at 7247 Andrews Road, and it is within the RSA18 Residential Zoning District. This property has a long history dating back to 1977 when it was annexed into the city, and at some point, a church was constructed on the lot. Since then, there's been several improvements made to the church itself, and then recently, on May 15th of 2025, uh, the applicants went to the Board of Zoning Appeals and requested a variance to encroach into a landscape easement. That variance was denied, so the applicant went back and reworked the site plan so as not to require the need for variance. Tonight, they are proposing a parking lot that would add 26 new parking spaces to the rear of the lot. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with conditions as listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor? Seeing none, thank you, Director Taylor. Is the applicant here? If you state your name and address for record, are you, are you okay with the conditions of staff?
Yes, sir, Josh Burnett, 3157 Highway 64. Uh, we're okay with the conditions that staff has presented.
Okay. You'd like to speak on behalf of the application?
Sir?
You'd like to speak on behalf of the application?
Yes, sir. Um, so just to give a little bit of background, uh, please note that this property's shape is very long and it's very narrow, and there's residences on each side of the property. The variance that we requested before, uh, was to keep the parking lot from being so long, um, but to encroach into the east buffer by 15 feet, because there's a 150-foot tree line behind those deep residential lots on the east side. That was denied, so we came back and provided a 20-foot buffer around the perimeter of the site. Uh, we've reduced the number of parking places, unfortunately, and unfortunately, some of the members will have a little bit longer walk to go. The reason why we have, wanna bring parking is there's 30 members approximately on Sundays. Uh, there's approximately seven parking spaces right now. The congregation has had to use the existing school, uh, to transport people on Sundays, and then they also have annual meetings where they will have 75 members, and that really congests the parking lot, and they have no place to park. It's all grass or woods. So we've also managed the stormwater, that was an issue that we've worked with, with Aaron. Uh, we're providing detention on the west side, um, and I have an email dated stating that the, uh, stormwater is satisfactory. Any other comments or questions, I'll be happy to attempt to address.
Sure, any questions to the commission, to the applicant? Seeing none, thank you for your application.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or, come on, commission? Do you know questions, Chair, entertain a motion or another question?
Move we approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, got a first and a second?
James Reed?
Yes.
David Hunt? Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Passes, thank you. Okay, moving on, the last item we have for tonight is Youth Villages Billing Addition at 7410 Memphis Arlington Road. Director Taylor, you'll introduce that to us, I appreciate it.
Jamie Bostic with A2H Inc., on behalf of Youth Villages, is requesting planning commission approval of a revised site plan for the Youth Villages campus. The property is located at 7410 Memphis Arlington Road, on the northeast corner of Memphis Arlington Road and Broadway Road. It is within the RE Residential Estate Zoning District. Youth Villages was originally annexed into the city of Bartlett in 1985, and over the years, there has been many improvements and/or additions to the property, which this commission has reviewed and approved. Most recently, on June 2nd, 2025, the planning commission approved a parking lot addition near the Boys Dorm. This specific request tonight by the applicant is for the approval to add a 49,615 square-foot addition to the existing girls dormitory, along with two new recreational areas, a generator enclosure, and an additional compactor enclosure. To accommodate the expansion, existing parking spaces will be removed and relocated. In addition, Jamie's house and its associated signage will be moved to a new location, which will be determined at a later date. A 310-foot retaining wall is also proposed along the southern property boundary, adjacent to Memphis Arlington Road and the entrance drive. With that being said, staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with conditions as stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor?
Will the new retaining wall replace some of that fencing that's there now? I mean, there's a... It runs along Memphis Arlington.
Yes.
Any other questions for Director Taylor? Seeing none, thank you, Director Taylor.
Wait a minute.
Hey, John? John's recognized, hey, John had a question?
Yes.
Uh, retaining wall for privacy, how tall is this wall?
Ms. Bostic?
Yes. This is the applicant.
Hi, Jamie Bostic, A2H, 65 Germantown Court. Uh, the retaining wall will be on the low side, 10 feet tall, and then on the high side, we'll have an additional four feet of screening with planting in front of that.
And this wall runs along what road?
It runs along Memphis Arlington and wraps around that entry and heads north a bit. It'll be 10 feet tall at its highest, there in the corner of the entry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you can stay up here, I'm about to call you. Thank you. Any other questions for Director Taylor?
Yes, sir, it's offset, um, about 10 feet from the right-of-way.
Oops, sorry.
We have a preliminary design for the footing right now, so we've tried to keep the footing off the right-of-way with enough room to construct it. Of course, yes.
While you're here, how you gonna fix that intersection?
Uh, on our property.
I appreciate Director Taylor, I'm gonna ask the applicant to come forward and say name and address for record, we'll start that part now.
Sure. Jamie Bostic, A2H, 65 Germantown Court.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
What's the, uh, material of the retaining wall?
Thank you, Director Taylor.
You know, we also have representatives from our architectural design team and the owners, so, um, the actual finishing on the wall might be better answered by them.
If you state your name and address for record, please?
Hi, I'm, uh, Luke Burnett, I live at 816 Yates, um, in Memphis, Tennessee. I work for BRG3S, who's the architect of record for this new expansion. Um, the retaining walls, Jamie's informed you, uh, the outside facing Memphis Arlington Road is gonna be brick, and we're gonna provide pilasters, which is a attached column every 20 feet on center, that'll be capped with a pre-cast concrete cap.
I didn't ask, you, you have read the conditions of staff, and you approve of those?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions for the applicant? Any other questions? Seeing none, any questions for the applicant or Director Taylor? Seeing none, do you, I'm sorry?
I guess I, I still have some questions, I'm sorry.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Why is this wall necessary?
Yeah, so, uh, the existing row center is at 314 feet, um, and if you were on site, the existing parking lot is lower than the existing row center, uh, by about four and a half feet. So in an effort to allow for accessibility and a building, uh, that will not, um, that's all on one level, uh, we're continuing the expansion at, uh, the same level as the existing row center. And the intersection, um, of the drive where the cursor is right now is about 320 feet. So it, it's above, uh, the existing building by about eight feet, the finished floor. So in an effort to allow positive drainage away from the building and for the building to be usable for the youth villages, we're rescaping their play area and providing a retaining wall for that, for the play area and for positive drainage of rainwater away from the building.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
So the purpose of the fence is containment or privacy?
The, the purpose of the retaining fence? Well, for the city of Bartlett, I would say it would be for, uh, beautification, um, but it's serving like any good architectural element, like multiple roles, so this, this fence will be providing security, um, for the residents, and it will also be a pleasing retaining wall, um, with landscaping in front of it for the citizens of Bartlett. Um, it'll actually be 12 feet tall. The even better, so in an effort to provide a guard from finished grade, uh, it has to be 42 inches tall, and if we want a masonry dimension, it'll be 40 inches, 48 inches from finished grade. So keeping that sightline moving forward, it will be 12 feet tall.
To clarify, it will be 12 feet tall on the low side. It will not be visible, it will, you will not have a 10-foot wall along the road.
I think, um... If you think...
Yes, sir, the school, the school will, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
The school is lower than the road, it will be lower, so, so the, the, the large face of the wall will be facing inward towards the school. And it will come up a bit above existing grade on the high side to help with screening and fall protection. Does that make sense? Sorry. In hindsight, I probably should've drawn a section through the wall and...
Surely, Director, Director Taylor?
So this will go to the design review commission. The designs, the landscaping, all of that will go to the design review commission.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any other questions?
But the, the design review commission is not gonna say whether or not there's a wall, they're gonna say whether or not what the material is?
Yes, they will be concerned about the materials, the landscaping, how it looks, um, for the wall. It's up to the engineers to determine.
If we approve this, there's gonna, this wall's gonna be there?
That is correct.
Made out of something?
Made out of something, you know, they'll come up with what they want to propose the materials to be, and the design review commission can actually have them change it, make it more beautiful, but we don't know what that design looks like yet.
We have, we have submitted to design, we've submitted our plans to design review commission and intend to attend next week, um, and our submittable includes a brick retaining wall with a pre-cast concrete cap.
Thank you for that.
Sorry.
Any other, any other questions?
Just to, to aid to the clarification here, so as you're driving along Memphis Arlington, essentially that fence will blend into the existing fence, more or less?
Correct.
Got you.
I didn't understand, what, what was that you said, Sam?
As you're driving along Memphis Arlington, the new fence will essentially blend into the existing fence elevation-wise.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. Any discussion among the commissioners? Any discussion among commissioners? Comments? Entertain a motion then, or a comment?
So moved.
Okay? So is that a, is that a?
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second?
Yes.
Okay?
Who was that second one, so?
First was?
I did, I did the first.
Okay. Got David and John.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, motion carries. Have we received any notices for open discussion tonight?
We were not forwarded any papers for the open discussion this evening.
Okay, seeing the open discussion is, is for not tonight, uh, in, in this meeting. Thank you so much for attending, appreciate it.